Good evening, welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 5th, 2017. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscovia.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Johnson.
Thank you. We're standing on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There is a new resolution for item 10 in the packet, which is before you, and there's a copy available in the audience.
I'd like to just do it. Then we can revise.
Sorry. Motion by Geisler, second. By Wells. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted with that one change noted. And we're up to the approval of the minutes from June 20th.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are adopted. Next is our consent agenda item. First item is just an informational item. There's a corporate officer change for Northern Tier Retail LLC doing business as Super America, and that impacts all three of the, all three of our Super Americas in town, and it's really just letting us know their, who are the officers now for the company. And if you're interested, it's here. The next item is to adopt Resolution 17-73, amending the 2017 budget for the purchase of a replacement copier for CTN Studios. The existing copier recently broke down, and it would have been $1,100 to fix, or $3,000 to buy a new one, so we are looking at amending the 2017 capital equipment fund budget for the purchase of a new copier to replace the obsolete unit at CTN Studios. Item four, yeah, item four, the next item on the consent agenda, is adopt Resolution 17-74, amending the budget for a prep refrigerator. And this is, for the purchase of a prep refrigerator at the Golf Course Restaurant, the estimated cost to replace it will be roughly $7,500. This item will be amortized over five years, and this unit is the second refrigerator that has failed at Kendall's. Previously, council approved a similar purchase in June of 2017. This unit is slightly larger and more expensive. However, Belter Premier has offered a $1,050 discount for previously purchasing the last refrigerator from them. So, in the discussion points here, it says to purchase the replacement vehicle, and in the actual resolution, it says the actual cost for a new copier. So, we might want to clean that up before I assign the resolution. But this would be authorizing Resolution 17-74, amending the 2017 golf budget for the purchase of a replacement prep refrigerator for approximately $7,500. Number five is to approve the joint powers agreement with Anoka Ramsey Community College for the security contract, authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota and Anoka Ramsey Community College to provide security services for 2017, 2018, and they are billed for the actual, they are invoiced for the actual hours that we work over there. Next item is to approve a master contracting agreement with Valley Rich Company Incorporated for citywide emergency repairs. This agreement outlines the process that will be undertaken for work, including water main breaks, sanitary sewer repairs, drainage enhancements, et cetera, and provides annual pricing rates in the attached letter of engagement. So, we're going to be approving the master contracting agreement with Valley Rich Company Incorporated, and authorize city officials to execute the attached agreement for professional contracting services beginning 2017 and beyond. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve addendum A to the joint powers agreement for the Minnesota Task Force One Urban Search and Rescue Team. The city of Coon Rapids has a rostered member on the Minnesota TF1, and in order for the city to continue to participate in the Minnesota Task Force One, a signed agreement is required. So, we will be authorizing execution of addendum A, addendum A to joint powers agreement to allow continued participation in the Minnesota Task Force One Urban Search and Rescue Team. And the last item on our consent agenda is to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for strong beer and wine for American Legion Post number 334 for their annual member picnic on August 5th, 2017. And that's just contingent upon a successful background investigation. So, that's everything on our consent agenda. Councilmember Demmer.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any questions on that, or discussion from that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is adopted. Next item on our agenda is to consider Resolution 17-23 sub 9, awarding the contract for Coon Rapids Boulevard and Main Street lighting project. And city staff is proposing to replace the existing streetlights along segments of two prominent corridors in the city, Main Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard. This project was discussed with the city council in work session on several occasions. Had no idea how much work it was to pick out streetlights.
It was illuminating.
Yeah. It's, oh boy. And several options were reviewed before we selected the final fixture designs, and the, we ended up, we had two bids, but one was thrown out for multiple reasons. It did not meet the, the one did not meet the project specifications, the photometric calculations did not meet the project requirements, did not provide enough information. So, at any rate, we did, the engineer's estimate on this was $345,000 for Main Street and $110,000 for Coon Rapids Boulevard, and Protech Lighting Solutions LLC came in at $250,290 for Main Street and $89,960 for Coon Rapids Boulevard, and this is just for the direct purchase of the lighting assemblies. A subsequent contract for installation will be required upon award of this work, and will be brought back to the city council for consideration. So, Mr. Hammer, is there anything else you wanted to, anything you wanted to tell us about the lights?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I'm going to look for some direction from the council on is whether or not they wanted banner arms and/or electrical receptacles on any of these lights.
Okay, are the alternate, okay, so, and the banner arms, and those would be the capability to put the banner arms in, or they would go in there and be there?
To put them in. They would manufacture the poles with little couplers on that then would receive the banner arms.
Okay.
So, we don't have to put the banner arms up right away, but if we wanted banner arms, we need to have the poles produced that way.
Okay. They can be kind of festive. But it's also managing the banners and who's going to control that, but I think, I think especially through Riverdale, I can see where our, I would think our merchants would like them, or if, maybe it's a way for us to promote the city with city banners along there. What's the, how many, how many light fixtures do we have?
On Main Street, there's about 67, Mr. Mayor.
67.
So, we could do alternating sides of the street, every other pole, or if you wanted on all of them.
And, I know what, when, one of the times we were discussing this, we talked about having the couplers put in, and then later we could add the banner arms if we wanted, but this is 265 for the coupler installation and the banner arms to go in the warehouse.
The coupler needs to be put on the poles as they're manufactured. We don't have to put the banner arms up until we're ready to use them.
Right, but we apparently have to buy them.
Yes.
So, okay, all right, that was kind of, no. Yeah. All right. Council? Councilmember Griscovia?
My thought is like yours, it's a prominent corridor in Coon Rapids. I know the original lights didn't last all that long, but these new ones that we're putting up, the fixtures and everything, these things are going to have, you know, 50-year lifespan on them, and I think that having those banner arms on the pole now gives us flexibility. I wasn't sure that we had to buy the actual banners at this time, but apparently we do.
No, not the banners, the banner arms.
Just the arms, right.
Yeah, yeah. When we first discussed this, we had talked about just getting the couplers put in, so potentially we could add the arms later, but apparently if we're buying those, we have to buy the arms with them now. So, I'm sorry, who's that?
No, that was the clarification, and I think we should do that.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the arms. I'm comfortable with not buying an arm for every single light. We're just driving down a neighboring city, and they have their city name on absolutely every light, and you go, "Oh, I wonder where we are." So, you know, it can be overkill if they're too close together, but, you know, whatever. It allows you to do different things, like, you know, every third, or every fifth, or every second, or whatever. Certainly an option, but having the couplers on all of them is probably, you know, if you have to buy an arm to put a coupler on, then fine, buy them all, makes sense. What was the deal with the GFI? I know we talked about that, and it's escaping me.
That's just, Councilmember Demmer, that's just a receptacle that's built into the pole itself, so if you had snowflakes, or holiday lights, or something else, that they're right there, built into the pole.
All right. So, if you want to do lighted display, you have a place to plug them in?
Correct.
Okay. The lighted displays are nicer than the banners? I don't know. I feel like you don't need them, though, because if you have a banner, you've got light, but, I don't know. They, do we have, do we have any idea of what we would put in them that, like you mentioned, snowflakes or something like that, but I don't know if they're, it's not really something we normally do.
I can't think of anything that's been out there already that's lighted.
I guess I'll leave.
The flexibility is there, or maybe we just do them at the intersections and not do them along the stretch, and then maybe you can pull out from there.
Certainly something that'd be hard to go put in later, but I guess I'd leave that one up to, if anyone has a strong opinion, but I think the banner arms make sense.
Yeah. If there's a spot where, I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Geisler?
The question I would have, so, I agree that let's put the couplers and get the banner arms, you know, because it's then at that point, we know that the banner arms will fit the couplers, so getting them together would be handy. I agree that it doesn't have to be every pole, whether that's every other or alternating sides, to be more reasonable. And from the GFI, is the electrical there, so it's no additional electrical run, it's just the actual receptacle and hooking that up, or do they have to run additional power?
The receptacle will be within the pole, and the power to light the light would also...
Light the receptacle?
Correct.
So, no new power runs or anything?
Correct.
So, it's just that. Where, I mean, I go back and forth with that, because there's so many new things that are out there these days, where you're looking at the different LED lights, and you could, you know, I don't know if we'd want, you know, chasing displays up and down on the lights, or if, because it's on a light, you would think it would already be lit, that you could see the banner, and we wouldn't need anything other, extra. So, I'm, I'm to the point where maybe on the intersections, possibly, but I don't think we would need the GFIs everywhere.
Yeah.
I guess I feel the same way about the GFIs. I mean, I was thinking the same thing Jenny was saying. If you, you know, if you have something that's lit, that's plugged in and lit, that's underneath a light, I'm not sure. I mean, I guess you could have it around the pole or something, you could do decorations, but, I mean, have we done that in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
We'd have to, we'd have to create a new budget, a budget line for that, too.
Right, right, right.
Councilmember Demmer?
If we ever wanted to do something, you know, if we're not planning a Wi-Fi network or anything like that, but would that be the way you would do it, is you'd power it from the GFI there, or, I mean, because, yeah, I'm not that excited about having lighted lights, but, you know, is there anything else we'd want to put there, some sort of traffic counter, some sort of, any accessory use that'd be handy to have them, because I'm more than happy to put them in intersections, but a lot of those uses don't seem like things you'd want them every 30 feet, so.
Most of the traffic control items, you know, the flasher boards, message boards, those are all either generators, or battery packs, or solar, or something, so I, it's solely for aesthetic purposes.
Would, where would they be? I mean, would it, would they be up near the banner posts, or?
They would be roughly about three feet off the ground, recessed into the pole.
Okay.
Three feet off the ground, that would be handy for people to recharge their phones. So, it doesn't seem like we're feeling strongly about the GFCI, except for maybe if there's a reason to have them near an intersection or something. They're so low. Yeah, I was thinking, well, maybe if you ever did the over-the-street lights or something, but, I don't know. I'm not feeling strongly about the GFCI. Is anybody?
Let's wait for a motion.
All right. Well, okay, I think that's, it's a matter of, we just need to figure out how we want to make the motion, with the banner arms and without the optional lights, or without the optional GFCI, or with the banner arms and with a few outlets in some hand-selected places, or, I don't know.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer, wait to step up.
I'll be open to any amendments if someone feels strongly, but I would move that we adopt Resolution 17-23 sub 9, awarding the contract for Coon Rapids Boulevard and Main Street lighting project to Protech Lighting Solutions LLC with the alternate banner arms and with select alternate GFI receptacles at intersections as designated useful by the Public Works Director.
Maybe put a number on it, maybe like 12 or something.
How many intersections do you think?
Are we talking about just Main Street, or both corridors?
Well, I kind of think we need to do Coon Rapids Boulevard. If we're, if we're going to do Riverdale, I kind of think we need to do Coon Rapids Boulevard.
I'd say both. All right, so what I can do is, I'll see if we can just get the couplers on the poles and not have to get the banner arms, but if we do, then we're getting them for all, which is roughly 105 poles. GFI, there's one, two, three, maybe six to eight intersections throughout there?
Yeah.
I'll count them up and figure it out.
So, up to 10 poles or something?
Yeah, up to 10. It sounds great.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Was that motion clear enough now?
Got it.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Oh, all right. Thought maybe that's what you're waiting for. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Wait to step up.
We've talked about lights for so long. They've probably already burnt out.
It's going to be just so nice to have lights again on Main Street. We've never had lights, so they've always been so ineffective.
Dims.
Yep. All right. Item 10, and this is the one where we have a new resolution, bid amount, consider Resolution 14-26 sub 9, awarding the contract for Boulevard Park. And, you know what, Mr. Hammer, you want to just pick out what you want to talk about?
Mr. Mayor, we've direct purchased most of the equipment that goes in. This is just the site work, trails, landscaping, installation of the splash pad, storm sewer, expansion of the pond, a little bit of site grading, and, let's see, who did we have as the little bidder? Custom Builders. Custom Builders did all of our projects in 2016, all four of those parks under one project. I think they'll do a great job on this project as well, so my recommendation would be the base bid plus alternate A1, which is the colored concrete.
And, Mr. Hammer, could you explain the, that alternate bid two is for all rubber, rubber surface or something in the playground, rather than a mix of rubber and chips or something?
Correct. On the site plan shown, they show the areas, it's roughly about 50% of each of those playground areas is accessible rubberized surface, and then the other portion is wood chips, and so the second alternate would be to do that all in the rubberized surface and have no wood chips.
Sounds cleaner.
It's cleaner, it's more expensive.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 14-26 sub 9, awarding the contract for Boulevard Park improvement to Custom Builders Incorporated for the base bid and the alternate bid A1 for the colored concrete.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
Good job bringing up the splash pad one on the 90-degree day. That makes it a lot easier to vote for. You know, we were sitting out there at the carnival after, at the parade, and it was definitely one of us kind of looking over there going, "Yeah, there'd be a lot of kids playing on that right now," so I think it'll be a good addition, and, you know, on these, on these really hot days, it'll be hopping, so.
Mr. Hammer, the colored concrete, they'll put like granular or something in there so it's not slippery, is that what they do, or?
It's going to have a different broom pattern to it, so you don't want it to be too slippery.
Right.
But if you broom it too much, then it's too bad for your feet.
Right.
So, you're trying to balance the difference. So, there, there's either a grit mix that we'll utilize, or just a medium type of a brush, such that it's different, but will help with some of that skid resistance.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion on this? Will they have it in, will they, like, try it in the fall, or will they just get it in and then turn it on next spring?
Well, we're going to have to get it in and turn it on, so we'll bring you down there, you can get blue lips, you can run through that, and have lots of fun.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 under Old Business, consider adoption of ordinances 2190, 2191, and 2192 for code revisions related to multi-unit waste and recycling collection. We kind of ran you through the wringer last meeting, Mrs. Sinclair. Is there anything you wanted to add tonight?
Unless you have specific questions for me.
All right. Pull it up here again. So, this item is proposed to require all multi-unit buildings with centralized trash and recycling collection to provide at least a weekly recycling collection and a one-to-one ratio of trash to recycling containers on the property. The current pilot programs have shown that this revision has increased recycling rates, lowered trash rates, and created a cost savings for the multi-unit property. It is, it was also noted that this revision would result in improved compliance with the city's property management, I'm sorry, with the city's trash enclosure code. Educational information has been distributed to and/or discussed with property management personnel at all the city's multi-unit properties over the past two years, in an effort to increase awareness on recycling methods and offer assistance in managing bulky waste on the site. This code modification will be monitored by city staff for both the site inspections and the haulers. Upon license renewal, recycling staff will continue to work with each multi-unit property to ensure a successful transition for the individual needs of each site. Councilmember Demmer?
So, last week, we had, or two weeks, last meeting, we had the reading, and we, you know, thought of all sorts of theoretical things that people might complain about, and basically said, "If anyone has any complaints, let us know." I didn't get any. So, I would like to move adoption of ordinances, I can do them all, 2190, 2191, 2192, amending city codes 8-202, 8-215 sub 2, and 12-914 sub 5 for code revisions related to multi-unit waste and recycling collection. Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. I would caution that, I don't know how many actually watched this meeting, you know, but...
It's been on the agenda for a while. I know they've been talking to them for a while. I, yeah.
And this really impacts 54 multi-unit properties, right? And then, and then our, yeah. That's right, because we're, our business is already, we're on the semi-weekly thing. All right. Discussion? Councilmember Griscovia?
When would the ordinance change go into effect?
September 1st.
Excuse me?
September 1st.
September 1st.
That we talked about. Okay. The reason I ask that question is, does it give, does it give the owners of these buildings enough time to get into compliance with the trash enclosure ordinances that we have? Is that, do you think that's enough time?
Councilmember Griscovia, you're in the council. Right now, we have a lot of buildings that are out of compliance with the trash enclosure. We've dealt with every single one of these personally. So, what this does is brings more into compliance, but I'm not going to lie to you and tell you, 100% of these properties will all come into compliance with the exterior enclosure. There's some grandfathering in that's occurred. This is an opportunity for us to kind of find the right size for each of them, and then try to find a place to put them all inside. Correct? Second? Accurate? Thank you.
Okay. And, Mr. Hammer, that's because their trash enclosures were probably first built before recycling was done, so it was built to just cover one bin, and now that we're recycling, it doesn't fit in that one bin.
That's correct, and in some instances, no enclosure was built for any bin, and so the dumpster sits out in the parking lot, or in the side of a garage, or something else.
Sure. Or the 390 gallons are laying out next to the bin. Yeah. All right. Well, and, Mr. Griscovia, or, Councilmember Griscovia, is your, is your concern that we don't start being penal, penalizing with this in September, you know, or what?
I guess the concern was, is that will we, will there be some latitude in, you know, compliance to the new ordinance? And it sounds like there already is latitude, and there's unique instances where we work with these owners to get them up into the code, so that was really my biggest concern. It sounds like that would be addressed. If anything, it might give those owners, you know, a new look at this, to maybe they'll say, "Hey, maybe now is the time for us to build a new enclosure that covers everything, knowing this is the ordinance going forward." So, I think, I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. See, we got all the discussion out of the way last meeting, so. All right. Next item on our agenda is to, item 12, to consider planning, case 17-17, consider amendment to Gateway Commerce Center planned unit development, H&amp;W Family LLP. Mr. Harlecker, head into the mic. You've got a program.
Evening, Mayor. Excuse me, and council members. The item before you tonight is an amendment to Gateway Commerce Center, located at the intersection of North Hill Boulevard, Hanson, excuse me, and Highway 10. The area under consideration tonight is outlined here in black. It's this parcel here on what I would call the north side of Gateway Drive, and this parcel here on the south side, adjacent to McDonald's. Last year in June, city council approved an amendment to the PUD... Last year in June, um, city council approved, uh, an amendment to the PUD that gave us our current configuration, um, with a car dealership on about ten acres, excuse me, on the west end of the, uh, Gateway Drive, right here. Um, this parcel is owned by Walzer. Um, to date, they have not submitted any plans for the development, um, of that site. Along with that amendment, uh, was included a, a site for a hotel, right here, a site here that was, um, retail, um, commercial and office. This one here is a retail restaurant, retail restaurant, and this one here, it's a larger parcel, that was, um, a retail restaurant and office. And then McDonald's here, Holiday, Taco Bell, and the, uh, retail building, right Uh, the current amendment, uh, takes these two parcels here, um, the hotel and the restaurant retail, and the restaurant retail, and the restaurant retail office, and, um, combines them into, uh, one use, which is a second, uh, automobile dealership. Property on the, uh, north side of Gateway Drive would be used for, um, parking and storage of the, uh, car inventory. Um, this area here would include, uh, customer parking, um, outdoor display of vehicles, as well as a dealership. At this point in time, they're proposing a dealership approximately fifty to fifty-two thousand, uh, square feet, right here. Uh, the building design, um, will have to comply with the, uh, current design standards of the Gateway, Gateway, uh, PUD. Um, they'll have to come in for a separate site plan approval, and at that time, we'll look at the details, um, of the, uh, of the building. Landscaping, they do have, uh, extensive landscaping along Gateway Drive, on the parking lot islands, in the parking lot, as well as around the perimeter of the parking lot. Over in this area here, where the, uh, the dealership building is, again, they've got landscaping in the parking lot islands, uh, around the building. Um, one of the recommendations, um, should, uh, council approve the amendment, would be to add overstory trees along this backside here, to help soften the, the view from Hanson Boulevard and the ramp of the, kind of what I would call the working area, uh, of the dealership. Um, they also have a dumpster enclosure back here, that should be moved up closer to the building, and that will be addressed when they come in, uh, for, uh, uh, site plan review. Uh, signage, um, is part of the, uh, the original PUD, um, two large, um, monument-style signs were allocated along Highway ten. Uh, one was for the hotel, and another one up in this location was allocated for, uh, a project or development sign. Um, the thought is, is to allow the sign that was allocated for the hotel to be used by the Walzer property, and the sign that was gonna be for the, uh, development, um, project or the development sign would be allocated towards the dealership that's being proposed in this amendment. Uh, gradient and drainage will be addressed at the time of, uh, site plan review. Um, the applicant did provide a traffic study, and, um, it showed that, um, there'll be a, uh, actually a decrease in traffic. Typically, dealerships, um, generate less traffic than, uh, retail, hotel, and office uses. Um, there is enough room along in here for stacking to get the, uh, delivery vehicles, car delivery vehicles into the site. Um, circulation pattern to ensure that the vehicles are not, uh, unloaded in the street, um, that'll be assessed again at the time of site plan review, to make sure they're done onsite. Um, at the planning commission meeting last month, uh, the planning commission, um, had a split vote. They voted four to three on this. Uh, the three, uh, commissioners that voted for denial, um, thought that this was a significant change to the PUD, and were concerned about the piecemeal, uh, way the project is being developed. Um, they also thought that the proposed amendment eliminates the mix of uses originally proposed, and the second dealership is not an appropriate use, um, for this development. The four commissioners that voted, uh, to recommend approval, um, believe that the proposed amendment is reasonable, given the market conditions. Uh, dealership is unique, and will provide jobs and increase the tax base. Uh, the proposed use is also appropriate, given the suitability of the soils, and the proposed use in landscaping will preserve natural views across the site and out into the wetlands. Um, with that, the planning commission voted four to three to recommend approval of the proposed amendment, um, with the eleven, uh, conditions in the staff report, and with the, uh, uh, two findings included in the staff report. Um, we do have some views from, this is, uh, what the dealership would view, uh, would be from the street, from Gateway, uh, Drive. This is what it would look like from the ramp, and it's this area right in through here, that, um, we'd ask for some additional overstory trees. And this is from the overpass, again, we tried to get some additional overstories, trees along the backside of the building. And this is the view of the site from, uh, Highway ten. And, uh, the applicant is in the audience tonight, and, um, if you've got questions for them, and I, I assume they'd like to have, uh, a few words before the, uh, council.
Mr. Harlecker, that's kind of the, that's the Honda's, that's their model for a dealership. Does it, does anything jump out at you there that doesn't meet the design standards for Gateway, as far as, um, the, what's on the building, or any of the, do you see any issues with that?
I, I think a lot of the, the other buildings in, in the development have, uh, parts of the building with the face brick and the stone, and that should be incorporated into this. Um, the glass is nice, it gives the building kind of a modern, open look to it. But I, I think the building as proposed would not meet the design standards of the PUD.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Harlecker, or Councilmember Demmer?
If I remember right, um, when the very first time we approved a car dealership, and it was only on the, the small lot, we had put some language in somewhere that said that it had to be primarily a new car dealership. Um, I can't remember in what section we put that, but, uh, I just wanted, you know, and I know the current plan is, is for a new car dealership, but I thought that if we'd put that restriction on the one, we should probably carry that same restriction through for, for any.
Well, you, you can't have a used car lot in Coon Rapids, right? I mean, you, you can only have a new car dealership, correct?
Yeah, but it was something like, some specific language, because there was some plan to put a half-used, half-new, or, I remember that being a, a thing on the first one, that, that it actually kind of stopped the plan that was being tossed around, and then they came back with a larger. There, there was something about primarily new car that we, we put into the language at some point, anyway. Or I'm, or I'm remembering wrong, and I'm gonna get corrected.
Mr. Sutton, what?
Uh, Mayor, council, I think we, you may have done that last year, but it, I think it may have been redundant to what's already required, and that's, it's a new car dealership, not that they can't have used inventory, but it has to be primarily new. And I don't know, Scott, if you recall where, it states that, but I, I recall that in the conversation, but I'm losing the specifics on it, too.
Right. Uh, Mayor Cook and Councilmember Denver, you, you could add that, um, as a condition of approval, that'd be, uh, primarily a new car dealership, is that?
It, it just strikes me as fair and even, since that's what we did on the other one, if I remember right, but, you know.
Yeah. So maybe you just want them to look into it, and whatever that, if there was language in there?
Yeah, pretty much.
All right. Cause I don't remember that language being added, but, but maybe we did.
Mr. Mayor, maybe what we could do is something like consistent with the prior approval. Cause I, but I hear as you want consistency. So, maybe the words primarily weren't used, I don't know, but if we used consistent, that might get at what you're looking for.
If that's appropriate, yeah. I don't know if there's any other language in there that would then make it impossible, if we said consistent, and, you know.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker? All right. Um, so, would you, would this be the time that you'd like Mr. Sutton to come up, or should we have our discussion first?
Um, I, probably the council, probably.
Who's in charge of this meeting?
They wanna do that. They may, they may have some answers to your questions.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Um, Mr. Sutton, straight up to jury. Would you like to come up and...
Sure.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate your introduction and your presentation. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you this evening, and to request the PUD amendment and the plat for the Gateway Commerce Center. My name's Jonathan Adam, and I'm here representing H&amp;W for Gateway Commerce Center. Um, I wanted to start out by giving a little brief history of the property, and then it'll be my pleasure to introduce Mr. Nate Sutton, who's the new Honda franchise owner for Coon Rapids. Um, the site was originally fifty-eight acres, that was purchased by the developer in nineteen-seventy-two. Um, in nineteen-eighty-one, the developer donated twenty-six acres to the county for mitigation and open space, which is on the north side, um, along the wetland of where Taco Bell and, uh, the retail strip are. Um, the, then, the remaining thirty acres is what's making up today's current concept that you see. Um, this thirty-acre development was governed by the PUD design guidelines. Mr. Harlecker did refer to those, that those are, the standards are in place, and we worked with staff and, um, the council members at the time to create those, which we continue to enforce and look forward to having. One of the things that, um, has come up in addition is that we have, there's another thirty-six acres that's immediately west of the cul-de-sac, that's currently in place, um, that the developer owns, which he is planning to donate to the city upon Mr. Sutton's Honda dealership completion. Um, we will then, um, no longer be the, I guess, the property designer, uh, we'll still be the designer, but we will now hand over the HOA responsibilities to the current owners of the development. So at that time, he is looking to donate the thirty-six acres to the city for more open space. Um, moving forward, you know, we've tried for ten years to get the hotel on the site with no luck. Um, considering the fact that retail is contracting, new retail is non-existent, new sit-down restaurants are being replaced by fast casual dining, and we have four of those already in the development. Um, and the lack of interest from hotel developers, given the suitability of soils and current market conditions, uh, last month, the planning commission, as Mr. Harlecker referred to, thought that the PUD amendment request was reasonable for the land use. We also wanted to note that the proposed amendment does not change the road layout for the site. The building design will continue to comply with design guidelines for the PUD. Landscaping plan has been consistent with the PUD plan from original. Uh, the new uses consider, are considerably reducing traffic at the intersection. The new dealership will provide new good-paying jobs. The new dealership will provide seventeen million dollars in new tax base for the city. Um, and the use in the landscaping will preserve the natural views across the white line, as one of the planning commission members did indicate as well. For those reasons, we look forward to having an approval for the PUD and plat modifications. Um, and with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Nate Sutton. He can come up and tell you a little bit of background about himself and the dealerships he owns and his family. Um, as, and the Coon Rapids dealership for the Gateway Commerce Center, which is the one site that Honda corporate has approved, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So, um, I'm Nate Sutton, and our family has, uh, we live about thirty-five miles south of downtown Chicago, in a village called Madison, uh, bedroom community similar to Coon Rapids. So, uh, our family has lived there, uh, ever since we've been in Chicago, which is twenty-seven years. Uh, we moved from outside of Toledo, Ohio, so, uh, engineer by background, a buddy of mine's a Ford dealer, introduced me to the car business, and here I am, still selling cars, thirty years later. Um, we purchased our first dealership in October nineteen-eighty-nine, it's a Ford dealership. Uh, we have around a hundred and fifteen team members. Uh, we purchased our Honda franchise in May of two thousand and ten. It was also an open point similar to this one, where we acquired land, built a building, and we've been open for a little over seven years. Uh, both dealerships have been, um, very successful. Uh, we sell a lot of vehicles in our Ford dealership. Uh, our total deliveries this year will be over four thousand new vehicles. Honda will retail around thirteen hundred. Um, we are very strong in the community in customer satisfaction and owner loyalty. So with Honda, we are in the top twenty percent in the country, seven out of seven years, in owner loyalty, i.e. repeat customers. Uh, that's accomplished through customer satisfaction, and customers wanting to come back and continue to do business with you. Uh, so, family-owned, we have three daughters, two of whom are in the business, two will be dealers, uh, one will be here in, uh, the Coon Rapids, uh, and running this dealership eventually. They are still a little young, they're thirty years old, twenty-nine and thirty, so probably, uh, four and a half, five years out from being dealer principals, but they are in the, uh, training program. So, it's a national competition to be awarded an open point, uh, by Honda, American Honda out of California. So, we prevail, uh, by grace, I guess, and favors. So, uh, we're excited about coming to the community. We will be a good tenant, uh, locally in our, uh, local community. My wife and I have been on a number of boards, Economic Development Commission for the Village of Madison, uh, local school board for over fifteen years, uh, a lot of different boards for charity organizations, boys mentoring, uh, Christian mentoring, and, uh, different programs throughout the community. Happy to answer any questions that you have. It is a new car franchise, uh, to Mr. Demmer's question, it is a new car, we will be selling new cars.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Sutton? Thank you for traveling up here again.
Oh, yeah. Southwest and our best friends. Thank you.
All right. So, let's see here. Here on twelve. So our first item on this is to, uh, consider an amendment to the Gateway Commerce Center Planned Unit Development. And, um, and as recommended by the planning commission, and then there's eleven, uh, conditions, yeah. Lost a word there for a second.
I, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the commission-recommended, uh, proposed PUD amendment with the following conditions. Do I need to go through all eleven conditions?
You just say the eleven listed conditions.
The eleven listed conditions.
That work for you, or do you want him to read them?
And based on the two findings.
Motion by Kicker, and a second by Wells. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Okay, so, this just, one just makes me sad, for a number of different reasons. It, it has nothing to do with a great Honda dealership, or Mr. Sutton, or anything. Um, it's the history of the site, and the intent from the PUD that, um, when it was first put together, I don't know, fifteen years ago, or whatever. Um, and so I was on the planning commission at that point in time, and so I, I understand the, the split vote with the planning commission, because there, there was always such a great vision and hope for this site. Um, and I totally understand that what was hoped for, how many years ago, was not going to be a reality. Um, have had huge frustrations with the developer on the site with, "Oh, here we're gonna do this. Nope, here we're gonna do this. Nope, here we're gonna do this." The whole concept of a planned unit development is to have a plan. There has been no plan for this site, it's just been... There has been no plan for this site. It's just been very reactive with what is coming. So, it makes me sad. At the same point in time, there, it's time to move forward and get this done. But, I can, I want to thank the planning commission for all of their work and their diligence and discussion, because I totally understand where those three people were coming from. Because I'd love to be able to see what we had envisioned at the beginning. That doesn't mean that it was possible and it's going to happen. We could continue to wish, and that's not a great thing. So, I will support this reluctantly, because, but I want to have a great business in town. So, that's where the drawback is. I would have rather have the plan, but this is what we're going to have. The last question is, when we look at the site plan, will you also be looking at the interior movement of customers from the site where they're going to actually have to kind of cross Great Way Drive to potentially the lot where the cars are going to be if they want to go, is there, are we going to have to do striping, or will that, will we take care of that on the site plan?
Yes, Mayor Cook and Councilmember Geisler, there is, one of the conditions did address that that the crosswalk, excuse me, crosswalk must be enhanced to make it more prominent, whether that's with changing in pavements and striping, maybe some lighting at the, where the sidewalk can be designed, something to let pedestrians and drivers be aware of what's there.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Councilmember Wells?
I'd just like to say that I'm well aware of the history of this project. I don't feel like I'm settling on this project. I'm excited about this project, and I just want to be upfront about that, that I don't think that we're settling. I think this is a great project.
Councilmember Demmer?
I had a couple of people call me on this, so whenever that happens, I always feel like I have to just sort of explain myself a little, and somewhere between these two, I don't have as much history with it. I also understand the four to three vote, and I also understand the history on it. I, I'm happy to support it. I think it seems like a good business is coming into town, and that's always good. I do understand that there was a hope for more of a mix of uses, and in the end, we got a couple of car dealerships and a couple of fast food restaurants, and that really is very far away from the original plan. I also understand the original plan was 15 years ago, and, you know, again, I'm probably happier with a Caribou Coffee than a bank at this point, for example. So, you know, I know some stuff changes. I kind of wish you were moving into the site on the far end, because I think that's the best car dealership site, and I'm still not quite sure how that ended up the way it did, where that site is now reserved for a different car dealership, and now we have two. You know, at some point, though, I recognize it's not going to be a hotel, it's not going to be a big box store, and I'm kind of glad, because if it was a big box store, it'd probably be emptying out anyway. So, yeah, it would have been nice to see a bigger mix throughout the site, but if you can't have exactly what you want, it's good to have something good, so, you know, welcome to the community and best of luck selling some Hondas and employing some people, and I'll support it, and just, if people, you know, disagree with that after calling me, I I don't think in the end there were a lot of options that would be better than this, and so, I think we got good, and you don't want good to be the enemy of, or, you know, perfect to be the enemy of good and have an empty lot sitting there forever, so, you know, like I say, welcome aboard.
You might want to wait till after the vote.
Presuming.
Yeah. Yeah, and I have great respect for our planning commission, and I know they agonize about this, and I know, you know, when you think back to how this started, and, oh, my gosh, that would have been wonderful to have two hotels and a, you know, and another restaurant, and all of those things there, it just wasn't happening. I mean, that, this market has changed. We did have a hotel interested, and I believe they did, they went, we can't build here. We can't afford to build here. Everybody that's built there has spent extra money building because of the soil, and I think at some point, those are the realities you face. And I would much rather have a very nice Honda dealership in there with the jobs it brings than a hotel that eventually, like the old Holiday in Anoka breaks in half, you know, because of the soil. So, I'm, I would have, I would have preferred the pie in the sky, the original vision, but I'm thrilled with the way this is laying out right now, and I will be supporting it as well. Is there other discussion on this? Oh, you and then you. Councilmember Griscovjak.
I'd just like to say that, you know, looking at the planning commission, the four to three vote, and I did get one call from a constituent on this, so I did a little background checking on it and all that, including talking to the chair of the planning commission. What I saw their concerns were really primarily two big concerns. One was the number of change to this PUD over time. So, and the other one was, do we want Coon Rapids to become known as an auto dealership runway? So, in looking at that, the first point would be the the fact that all the changes were coming into place. So, the way I'm looking at it now is, if this would have came to the commission with this PUD in the first place, would we have approved it? And looking at the soil conditions and the area, I believe we would have approved it, at least in this area. I think I want to look at that. The other thing about us becoming known as a, you know, a strip of auto dealerships, I don't think that's going to be the case, because you already pointed out, we don't have used car dealerships in Coon Rapids. And if another car dealership moves in outside of Walzer, that is going to have to come before us as well. So, those were the things that I'm considering here. I did want to ask the question from the developer about the 38 acres of natural area to be donated to the city. It's the first I've heard of that, and can someone explain a little bit on that front for me? Is that from the city, or is that from the developer? Is it the first time we're hearing that?
Lot of nodding. Mr. Adams, you...
You can't see it real well, but, so, the original developer, it's over to the left there, purchased an additional, I think it's 38 acres of land adjacent to this parcel, and we used it to do extensive mitigation at the time, enhancement, and then creation of wetland. So, once the development cycle is completed, the intent is to donate that land back to the city as, and it can become permanent open space, or whatever you wish to do with it, I guess, going forward. So, that's what, what that comment was about, and so, we were just making note that, once this 10.81 acres is purchased, realistically, then we only have the two lots on the north end left to develop, and at that point, we can, you know, go through the process of donating that land, like we did to the county back in 1981, so.
Mr. Stammel, did you still have something?
Yes, I just, just to make the point as we did last time, when we modified the use for the Walzer-controlled land, that what council is approving tonight is, of course, allowing this use in the PUD. We're not actually approving the Honda dealership.
Right.
And the reason I throw that out there is, and I think Mr. Sutton will be in here as soon as he is able to get the application, get it moving forward, but in theory, something could go awry, and he could move away from the project, and we'd be left with the use as it is, and it could be a different dealership. But just to make that clear, because we have spent a lot of time talking about specifically Honda and the attributes of that project, and really, we're approving the new use, so.
It's good verification.
Make sure we run that page.
I have one comment on that, too, is I think Mr. Sutton's actually got the application and is planning to submit for the 10th, so, of this month, so, his intent is to start construction as soon as possible.
All right. I was trying to remember those little cars made in Czechoslovakia that...
Ugos.
The Ugos, yeah, so we're not going to see a Ugo suddenly pop in here, huh? Okay. All right, is there any other discussion on this?
Just if I could add, the second part of my thing is the fact that it's a Honda dealership, and I think Honda is a good brand, and I know this isn't the thing, but you got to think about all of the constituents in Coon Rapids. There's a lot of folks driving these vehicles around here, so a convenient spot for them to have that service and to bring that business in is just another, another thing I'm putting in favor.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so we have amended the... So, we've made the amendment, and now we are looking at, considering Resolution 17-75, approving the final plat for Gateway Commerce Center fifth edition. The proposed final plat is consistent with course well. Mr. Harlecker, you wanted, is there anything here you wanted to cover, or it seems like that kind of affected all of you at this point?
What this final plat does is creates the lots for the PUD amendment that council just approved.
Anybody need more than that? Councilmember Demmer?
Move Resolution 17-75, approving the final plat for Gateway Commerce Center fifth edition with the following conditions, one and two.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Mr. Johnson, did you get that with the conditions? Very good, all right. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, and that's done. Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Thank you, Mr. Adams. You don't have to leave, but you can. Thanks, Mr. Harlecker. All right. Item 14 is to consider Resolution 17-72, calling for a public hearing to vacate a public roadway easement. And this is dealing specifically with the property at 555-127th Avenue Northwest, Coon Rapids. And so, we're establishing a public hearing for August 2nd, if this is approved, and I know that there's a lot of questions, and I'm hoping that we can have a discussion about this at some point, but...
I don't know, yeah. Mayor and council, I thought, you know, the best course of action probably be to continue to set that date, and if you have specific questions you want to get out there, no, that's fine, otherwise, certainly, you could talk to me or Mr. Himmer after the meeting and let us know what those are, and then we could bring that dialogue forth to the August 2nd meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, and specifically, it's when you look at, when developments are done, when there's a property that's non-conforming, and I'm not really sure how this one got in there, because this was built in 74, and the houses around it were all built within a couple of years of it anyway, so it's, it was almost a concurrent development. I don't know why the driveway doesn't come out to 127th Lane. You know, it's got frontage on 127th Lane. It appears to have a little retaining wall, but when you look at the topography, it doesn't really change by about four feet from the curb to the garage, you know, and they reorient garages all the time to make it conform to a development. And I don't know why we don't work with them to get it to conform to the development, rather than creating this entity all to itself that then exits onto a county parkway road, where now he's at the mercy of the Anoka County Parks Department for his snow removal, and then, and, as mentioned earlier, that then the, and then the driveway crosses the bike path there, so what do we put stop signs on the sides of his driveway, or, I don't know, I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't look right. You know, I've seen these all the time, where they reorient them and make the driveway go to orient, to the development, to the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is our first request as well. We believe we can make that driveway go into that garage. The property owner wasn't interested in that discussion. His feeling was, that's really the back of my home. Then we start to get into the question of, what's my backyard and what's my front yard with regard to composting and storage and some of those other things. So, he was adamant, I'm not interested in going out to 127th Lane. So, if this option isn't considered, we'll just reconstruct the driveway right back where it is, and he'll continue to function just as he does today.
And the driveway needs to be reconstructed? That's what, that's what's going on right now?
Correct. That's part of the, I believe it's 17-4 reconstruction project. He was in, he was contesting his assessment. We had mentioned to you, we'd be back talking to you about this, so, we talked about two different options. We staked them out. We met with him on a couple of occasions. We talked about the trail, so we'll have kind of some driveway ahead signage put in. We'll probably have to drop the trail a little bit. We've got some gas main that runs down through there. So, we're basically down to this vacation and taking him out to County Parkway A, or just reconstructing that existing roadway driveway in its current location.
All right. Does anybody else have any specific questions about this?
With this meeting you're going to call, we will be notifying all the adjacent property owners that have that, and some of them kind of utilize that for back access, so there may be others here to speak to whether or not this is vacated. It will remain right-of-way. It's Anoka County right-of-way. The city has a roadway easement over that right-of-way, and the county said they'd retain ownership to that right-of-way.
And I, the current option is less than desirable, but I think all we're doing is going to another less than desirable. I don't know, I don't see the win here, but...
I'll state, for my purposes, the win is, it's an area that we don't have to maintain. Currently, that's considered a cul-de-sac in our system. He probably plows it more than we do, because he just needs to get in and out faster than we get there, because it's kind of one of those lower priorities, being a cul-de-sac. But then, it's something that doesn't go on to our reconstruction schedule year after year, or, and it really benefits one property owner. So, to me, that's the benefit, is it's maintenance that the city would no longer have to do.
The, do we know when the parks, when Anoka County Parks plows Parkway A? Because Anoka County doesn't plow it, per se. It's, it's Anoka County Parks that maintains that, apparently, according to the county.
That, I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor.
Because it seems like, it just seems like plowing on a park isn't necessarily a priority, and he's going to end up trying to figure out how to get out of there anyway, but... All right. So, are we interested in having a public hearing on this on August 2nd? I think we need a motion, don't we? Because this isn't, we're not doing this as an introduction. This actually needs to be a motion, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 17-72 to call a public hearing on August 2nd, 2017, for a vacation of a public roadway easement.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. So, we'll be having a public hearing on August 2nd for that, and the notices will be going out. All right. Now, to something really fun. Mr. Stammel, do you want to hit the highlights of this? Because, oh, Mr. Himmer's got one, all right. Somebody's going to take credit for this. Consider resolu, I'm sorry, consider approval of a contract with the Minnesota Blue Ox for usage of the Coon Rapids Ice Center. Mr. Himmer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Minnesota Blue Ox is a new franchise in the USPL. They're division or tier three. You're talking about roughly people ages 16, 17 to 19, 20. It's another option for those who maybe aren't on their high school teams, or don't get a scholarship, or move on. They are looking to play roughly 20 to 25 games at the ice arena and make that their home facility and practice. The good news is, is they practice noon to 2:00, and really, noon to 2:00 is just dead ice time for us. So, the times they need it are going to work well for us. The weekends, there's flexibility. We've brought in the high school league. We've brought in the youth hockey league. They're very excited about this partnership as well. They actually brought it to us, and so, this starts, I believe they got tryouts and camps starting in about three weeks down there, and they would start their season roughly in September through March. So, this is for the ice time and the usage of the ice arena.
I think this is really exciting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed Minnesota Blue Ox contract for usage of the Coon Rapids Ice Center during the 2017-2018 season.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. And they are just, they're going to be listed as just the Blue Ox, or will they be listed as the Coon Rapids Blue Ox? Because some of these teams, you know, the Wisconsin Rapids River Kings and the Ironwood Uppers and, you know, Dell's Ducks, we know where they're coming from. and, you know, Dell's Ducks, we know where they're coming from.
I think what they're officially known as is the Minnesota Blue Ox.
Minnesota Blue Ox.
But they haven't been shy in their advertising and marketing and website to show Coon Rapids Ice Center, and sort of market, and trumpet the great facility we have there, and they're excited about all the new amenities of that building, and we're happy to have them, so.
Excellent. All right. We have Councilmember Wells?
Just point out that wild coach Bruce Boudreau was at Carnival the other day, I know, because I sold him an ice cream, and I was told later that he walked in the parade with Coon Rapids hockey, so he's already a part of the community.
Excellent. Councilmember Demmer?
I wanted to point out, too, that this isn't a giveaway, they, in the contract, the user agrees to pay the following rates for the ice center usage, so they're, they're a tenant, not a charity. There was something you had talked about before, about having to restructure something, something. Did all that get sorted out? Are we, we're okay?
Councilmember Demmer, members of the council, there was some question about the tax-exempt bonding. Because they're not a year-round user, and we're offering it to them at the same rates, we offer it to anybody else, as the general public, that doesn't apply. And it's just a year-to-year contract, that, that's what it is. We couldn't enter into anything longer term, absent restructuring some of that bonding. So, right now, it's year-to-year, we'll see how things go this first year, we'll both learn, there'll be some growing pains, I think everybody certainly understands that, but everything's fine as far as the bonding issues that were out there before.
Yeah, so I mean, it just seems like one of those hard-to-oppose things. We've got someone who wants to use our building, and is paying to use our building, and brings people to our building, so fantastic, good job getting them.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Greskovich?
To Councilmember Waits, point there, the user fees and everything like that. I thought there was some discussion about possibly upgrading the amenities, if necessary. If that is the case, that would solely be the responsibility of the Blue Ox, if they needed any amenity upgrades at the ice center.
Yes, Councilmember Greskovich, we had talked about exclusive use of a locker room, the same thing we did for the high school, and same thing we did for the youth groups, is if that's a space they want to make their own, we can allow them to use it, but they would have to do any improvements to that space as a donation, and it stays with the building.
Very good. And then, will we later be dealing with how they have beer at their games, or...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, later?
Yes and no.
Oh, okay, all right, very good.
Put alloy in, alloy in country.
Mr. Stemwell?
I'll just get mention, I think the way they would handle this, just through a caterer's license, like we would at a different, you know, other municipal facility now, and so, you know, they'll be able to sort of select someone that they could bring in, would have to get through our approval process, but, you know, if they want to pick a pizza chain or restaurant that's got a license, that they could come here, sell pizza and beer, that would work, we could make that work, basically, so.
Can we get the trademark on Blue Ox?
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
That motion carries.
Item 16, was that still on tonight's agenda, or did we kick that out for a while? Consider Resolution 17-76, establishing the city manager's salary. It was a good performance review, and this will be establishing his salary effective June 17, 2017, and it's a step increase within the city's 2017 compensation plan. All other aspects of Mr. Stemwell's contract will remain unchanged. Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 17-76, a resolution establishing the city manager's salary.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. It just sounds so patriotic, too. You know, Resolution 17-76. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I would like, just like to say publicly, that I, you know, we have the conversations, and I think our city manager has been doing a fabulous job, and working with the city, and the staff, and the council, so, thank you.
Yep, yeah, it was a, it was a tough interview process to start out, and you are, you're doing a marvelous job. Everything I go to, I'll be looking, you're there. So, now you're very impressed and thankful. And staff seems happy, that's really important. All right, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? How many opposed? Oh, that motion carries, no... And we are on open-mic public comment. Is anybody here to address the council for open-mic? All right. We have no reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. And I'm wondering if we should have Chief Piper kick off our other business?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I have two things. Last week, or, I'll start with, firefighters across the United States are passionate about raising money from us to go to dystrophy for the poor folk that are afflicted with that terrible disease, and the most common way that that happens is through the fill-the-boot campaigns, and as you know, we've been doing that for a few years here in Coon Rapids. And last week, for 15 hours, we were out on Main Street, and Northdale out there by, you know, raising money, and I want to just mention the fact that thanks to my coworkers, I'm very proud of them, they were out there for the 15 hours, we raised over $30,000 again, just like last year, thanks to the generosity of the community. I would also like to say thank you to the community that donated. I know myself, when I was helping count the money, I was counting everything from loose change to $100 bills and $100 checks, and that's really, thank you to the community for being so generous to that cause. Issue number two, as you know, the carnival ended last night, it was a very successful year, the weather cooperated. It started on Sunday with the 5K to 10K, I believe over 300 people participated, moved it up an hour, and as Councilmember Demmer knows, for runners, it was, I think it was nice to start a little bit earlier for weather, you know, temperatures and stuff like that. That went well, and we had craft show, car show, bands every night, and it ended last night with fireworks. The weather was iffy all week about what was going to happen. In the end, it was quite impressive. Mother Nature had a lightning show in the background, along with our fireworks display that went really well, and we were comfortable that everything was going just fine, and the fireworks ended at 10:30, and then about a little after 11, our carnival chair, Shannon, got a phone call from our weather service, said, "You have 25 minutes before the storm hits." So, along with our police department, we worked with the carnival operator and got everybody out of there, and by the time the storm actually hit, everybody was gone, other than the workers, and we were putting things back together. So, it was very successful, and then also for anybody that was there, they know that they were not, they did not leave the carnival grounds and get home within five to 10 minutes, it didn't happen, and be assured that we will have a follow-up meeting, and we'll continue to do what we can to tweak getting people out of the carnival grounds. But I think people have to realize, the bottom line is, is that is a major event, thousands of people, and we will continue to do what we can to tweak it, but it's going to always be a while to get out of there, and I suggest to people, you just have to understand that and be patient, but know that we're aware that it was a while before people got home. We will look at it, and with that said, it was a great year.
I always, I always encourage people to know the neighborhood, because while two roads are plugged up for 45 minutes, all the other streets are open. You just turn right and go somewhere else, you know, but... No, it was a fabulous event, oh my gosh, and you guys, the fire crew, the North Star Lions, you were there from constantly, and John Leggett was there when you got there and when you left, I'm sure.
He was.
Diane Busta did a tremendous job with the parade. I think she's going to be writing some nasty grams to some people at the counter, but, a little hold up there, but... Everybody loved it, it was awesome, and I've never seen so many people in one spot ever in Coon Rapids, and obviously neither had T-Mobile or Sprint, because nobody's phones were working, it just, it just overwhelmed everything. Do you want to add anything?
No, just, as you said, great weather, great time, great three days.
Fabulous fireworks, oh my gosh, it was just, everything was great. Aloe was there with their creamsicle beer, and, yeah, it was a lot of fun. Any other business? Councilmember Demmer?
Tuesday, July 11th, is the next Summer in the City, Summer in the Park neighborhood meeting, so come, come to Delta Park and get to see the police cruiser, and the fire truck, and the, any city works vehicles that are there, meet the city manager. A few of the council members, and, you know, come, come listen to what's going on in the city, and the last one we had was pretty well-attended. It's just a good chance to chat and get some questions out, and, you know, hope to see you there.
Yep. No, there, if you have any questions about anything about the operation of Coon Rapids, that's where you come to find out. You've got department heads, you have people from all the various departments, and, you know, if they can't answer the question, there is no answer.
And it's just a good chance to be in the same place as all your neighbors, too, you know?
Yep.
Just a, you know, ice cream from the firemen, and, you know, park play on, and Delta Park is another one of those that's really different than it was a few years ago now, so.
Very nice. All right, other business? Mr. Stemwell?
Council, I'd just like to mention that the farmer's market started at the Coon Rapids Ice Center on July 12th, which is just about a week away, from 3 to 6, kind of running every Wednesday thereafter into September. We have three special dates again this year that have, or activities beyond just the farmer's market. July 19th is the Health and Wellness Day, can bring out a wellness truck, they'll do like blood pressure checks and those sorts of things, a kids' day on August 16th, and a senior day on September 20th, so more information on our city website.
Awesome. All right. Any other business? Councilmember Wells? You reminded me of something, maybe Chief Piper, if he's listening. Safety camp, is registration ongoing for that now, for...
Yes, I believe it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, I believe it's 18 and 19? Is that a Tuesday, Wednesday on my calendar in front of me, but yes, that's, registration is open, and for people, for kids going into fourth or fifth grade. Thank you.
Well, and that actually kind of reminds me that Night to Night is coming up, August 1st. August 1st, so if you have not yet organized your Night to Night party, I encourage you to call our police department, and, or go online. Don't call 911. Don't do that. So, all the information is online, and they will provide the assistance to plan your party. Probably even cater it, right?
No.
No, all right. Other rules? All right. Any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, for adjourned.
Yes.